The here and now of business and trade news from the Port of Los Angeles.
In this edition, we are amped up about cargo ships plugging in at the Port of LA. Let's get started exploring this edition.
Latitude, it's right here.
And it's right now. The Port of Los Angeles is all amped up as the first port in the world to use alternative maritime power, or AMP as we say for short, for container ships. The Port of LA is proud to report that it has the most shoreside AMP connections of any port in the world.
Concern over air quality in harbor areas has led to growing pressure on ports and shipping lines to reduce emissions.
How did AMP come about?
In the early 2000s, the port was looking to reduce diesel particulate matter here at the port and the surrounding community. And the Port of Los Angeles was the first port ever to plug in a container ship to shore power.
How do ships actually connect to AMP?
We use two cables that are lowered from the vessel. They use 6.6, which is 6,600 volts, to connect. Their large receptacle plug, they're capable of carrying 300 amps per cable at 6,600 volts.
After all safety checks are completed, they're plugged into shoreside electrical outlets.
AMP provides power for lights, refrigerated cargo containers, air conditioners, and ship equipment. While a ship's main engine is off at birth, its generators continue to run to provide electrical power to the ship. AMP has unprecedented air quality benefits. Plugging a vessel into shoreside electric power reduces ship engine emissions of diesel particulate matter, nitrogen oxide, also referred to as NOx, and sulfur oxide, also called SOX, by up to 95% per vessel call. On average, this eliminates the disbursement of one ton or more of ship emissions per call.
The state of California made a regulation to require all crews, container ships, and reeferships that make qualifying calls to California ports to plug in a mandatory 50% of their fleet starting January 1, 2014. And they also need to achieve 50% emission reductions.
Many new ships now come with AMP capability. However, it costs as much as $1 million to retrofit an existing vessel.
Over the last 10 years, the port has made approximately $180 million investment to shore power here.
This collaborative effort between the shipping lines and the Port of Los Angeles assures that the state regulatory program will succeed.
The Port of LA has committed capital resource to help outfit the facility with the additional plugs. So we have a total of six plugs at YTI. We expect to plug in about 60 vessels this year. Port of LA has, for us, always been flexible when it comes to committing resources early enough so that we can be prepared.
The concept of AMP has come a long way. Alternative maritime power will play a vital role in the future of maritime industry. And the Port of LA is amped up and leading the way.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. I've been your taste in New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Council District 1 is a fascinating district from my point of view. You have the largest populations in this part of the city. Largest number of Salvadoranos, Central Americans, Filipinos, Koreans, Chinatown. You also have a strong historic fabric of the Jewish community in Lincoln Heights, in Highland Park, Westlake. Italian Hall is right there on Broadway. The historic fabric is rich in its architecture, in its relationship to downtown, and how it functions as a city. The social and economic spectrum is wide. Property owners who own million-dollar homes. Five minutes along the roadways through the valleys of the Royal Seco, and you find yourself in the flatlands, in enclaves of working families. People surviving on $22,000 a year, family of four. So this tremendous mix adds to the richness that is, I believe, the essence of Los Angeles, a great metropolis. You have these anchors for change because now you have parked spaces, open spaces, that can be centerpieces for how you redefine the space around it. They serve as magnets to pull in the kind of interest in reassessing ourselves in our space. Rail lines, all this became the magnet. These anchors for chains that allowed us to now redefine ourselves so that we can address these issues of need. Every aspect and every element of every development scenario that I've engaged in the past 20 years, it did not happen without the community being first. The change in Mercato Park has meant so many things for so many different people. 20 years ago, where you had homeless encampments throughout the park. You had gang members diving up space where they can sell their drugs and their wares, where families purposely avoided driving through there. Where folks who were trapped in their own apartments could not even walk out into their own stairwells because of stray bullets flying in the area. That's what we had there. And to be able to come back today and see families walking along, kids on bikes, people with their little dogs actually taking a morning stroll or the twilight of the late evenings. We have a soccer field that is state-of-the-art. We have a baton shell that's brand-new. We have a whole new security system. And to see the freshness of the grass when they actually mow it, and it looks so clean and green, and hearing the water in the fountain, and to actually be able to listen to yourself in the middle of this amazing city, what that meant to folks is that someone did care. That the city did give value to this community.
My role in Puerto Rico was to mobilize the community. It was very difficult in the beginning. Many people say we are crazy, we are stupid. We don't need a park here, we need jobs, we need factories. No, we need factories too, but the crisis is now the park for the people. Our kids, they're shooting together in the streets. And we need a park. Well, the people in the hills, not all wanted. The people in the lowlands, some politicians don't want it. Everybody recognized in the center, we need a park. How to make it was very difficult.
The fire stations, the fire personnel or firefighters, they're integrated in the community. They open up their doors during holidays, they engage families. We have great events in which community rooms are opened up to families and stakeholders who need to meet with police. The new police stations, parents can go and actually have a discussion with officers without being worried that a gang member is going to identify them given an issue that could be occurring on their block. So this integration of a new presence of a civil facility like a fire station, like a library, clearly begins to re-instill a sense of confidence that the people can engage and make a difference on their own. A voice that was never heard before begins to emerge.
Bueno, cuando yo platico con mi comunidad y tenemos nuestras reuniones o nuestras convivencias cuando hacemos nuestras limpiezas, este, en el futuro se piensa que ya no tenemos por qué movernos de nuestra comunidad como cuando habían los problemas que habían anteriormente y como han visto un cambio muy positivo en los últimos diez años, entonces nuestra gente no piensa salir de ahí sino que al contrario. Dicen, ahora nos sentimos muy bien, ahora miramos la pico diferente. Hoy miramos que podemos caminar un poquito más seguros, no deja de haber crimen, no deja de haber problemas, pero no nos podemos llevar al balance de lo que estaba antiguamente. Y en los últimos diez años, pues, es que es la realidad, no es que estar diciendo lo que no es. Es la realidad, ha habido un cambio muy grande, muchísimo muy grande dentro de la comunidad.
I have a tax office on North Broadway. Recently, I got involved with the opening up a café called Café in the Heights. And I did this because we didn't have a café in Lincoln Heights. For some reason, I guess the companies don't feel it's important to come in the neighborhood. We're trying to slow up the traffic on Broadway. We're trying to bring back business on Broadway. With the help of Councilman Reyes, we're putting up a new stoplight. People can look around and say, hey, this is Lincoln Heights, you know? What do they have here, you know? I could buy shoes here, I could buy a cellphone here, you know? You know, it opens up their mind instead of just coming through like a freeway with the community members such as the Neighborhood Council, the Lincoln Heights Chamber of Commerce, and the Business Improvement District, and other organizations. We have to partnership with other groups, we have to work together. And if we try to, you know, work together, I think we could accomplish a lot in the community. You gotta keep positive with the staff, working with community leaders, how to re-embrace our strengths with this new energy. And we have a new skill set here. We understand what our tax dollar means, and we understand what it can produce. So why not hold everyone accountable? We want our families to continue to be nourished. We want opportunities for our kids, and we want safer streets, fundamental, which has been the focus of my administration. Basic services, clean streets, and understanding that by working together, we can make this difference. And we've done it time and time again. And that's something we shouldn't lose, and that's where I want to be.
During California's next major earthquake, an epic battle will take place. Don't fight a brick, the brick will win. DareToPrepare.org.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamarc Park. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Sergeants, could you please call up to, uh, there's a joint committee meeting of budget and public safety? And tell them to come to the council chambers. I do want to thank Mr. Weezer, Mr. Laban, Mr. Parks, and Mr. Price for being here today and on time. Members, if you're in your offices, please come to the council chambers. We have a pretty packed day. I'd like to get started as soon as possible.
Sergeants, could you get checked with the committee room? Welcome to the John F. R. Chambers. We're waiting for a few more members. And this is Arts in L.A. Day. And I don't have to tell the artists, but for our students and others, always when you're in a public building, take a moment, look up at the ceiling and see the creative work that artists did. Mr. Weezer, thank you as always. Appreciate all your hard work.
Okay, sergeants, it's my understanding that the members of the combined committee are on their way down. The, uh, I'll just turn it over to Assistant President Pro Kim, uh, Mr. Laban. Mr. President, if you agree.
I agree, but then you let me do my second. Let's hear it for the president, Herb Wesson, right now. Very special presentation. And with this presentation, he is batting 1,000 every day on we do this very special presentation for animal services. We thank you. Mr. Kukorian is here. Budget and finance, public safety is on the way. Please attention to the center podium for Mr. Herb Wesson, President of the Council.
Okay, now we have lights, camera, action. Today, and we have a full house here today. Today is Pet Adoption Friday. So I want to make sure that this young lady, um, Mandy?
Mandy.
Mandy is adopted. She's four years old, a cocker spaniel mix. She does well with children, well with other dogs, and she's here with us today looking for a home. She just recently had three puppies. The puppies were adopted and for whatever reason, sometimes it's a little more challenging to get the moms adopted. So, uh, we at the city of Los Angeles, Mr. President, have a 100% adoption rate. So I do not want us to lose that. So I'm asking for people in the chambers or watching us on television or listening to us to adopt this young lady. She is not, is she not drop dead gorgeous or what? The Marilyn Monroe of, uh, of dogs here. And just as sweet as she can be, she's looking for a home. I have Arlene with us. Arlene has been with us for years. She always picks wonderful pets and, and brings them down. So I'm going to have Arlene stand off to the side for a while. So if you need to call a spouse or a live-in roommate, or you want to come down and meet her yourself, she will be here for a while. But we are seriously looking for a home. This is a, the city's very serious about this. If we don't adopt Mandy and other pets like Mandy, in fact, I'll just be, we're asking you to save her life today. Because we cannot keep all of our dogs or animals in the shelter. So I wanted to put a face with a, 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 a young lady, a young mom who is looking to go home and start another family. So help us in the city. Help us save her life. The phone number is on the screen, 888-452-7381, if you'd like to adopt her. Uh, if you are trying to adopt her and you find out that Mandy's gone, don't be upset. We have shelters throughout the city with lovely companion animals there looking for a new mom and a new dad and maybe some kids. So with that said, we're going to keep, uh, in fact, Arlene, I'm going to ask you to walk Mandy around a little bit so everybody can look at her and go, "Ohhh." And let's hope one of those "ohhh" will adopt her.
She said she wants to adopt her.
Oh, I think we, we, we may already.
Yes, she said she's got a home.
All right, let's give it up. We already have.
We have an adoption.
We already, that's.
Ohhh. Get up there.
Yes. So. So Mandy's new mom and we're.
That's amazing.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I'm good.
You're the best. Thousand, thousand percent. You're very good.
Thank you. So, Arlene, I'm going to let you work out all the detail.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and your great work there with our animal services. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bono, Buscayino, Sadio, England, and Fuentes, Weezer, Corret, Kukorian, Laban, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. Twelve members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Fonte moves, Mr. Weezer seconds.
Mr. President, that brings us to commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Kukorian moves and Mr. Uh, Mr. Uh, Paul Corret seconds.
Mr. President, there is a request from member to refer item five back to the Transportation Committee.
Without objection. Item five, back to Transportation Committee.
Very good, sir. Further, uh, there is a request, uh, given council's impending recess, to send all items forthwith today.
Absolutely forthwith.
Mr. President, items one through four are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials, members, specials? I don't see any. Let's prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next, Mr. Clerk.
Items six through nine are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Uh, do we have cards?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Then we will hold those items and that brings us where? Uh, Mr. Buscayino would like to reconsider item two, was it?
Yes, sir.
So let's vote on reconsideration on item two. Let's open, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, so now that item is before, uh, this body?
I'm going to call it special.
Okay, and so, and Mr. Buscayino calls it special. That brings us where, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings council back to presentations.
Okay, so what we want to do is I want to take a moment. We have, uh, I think we still do. Jose, are you still here? We have visitors from you, you think that are here, youth organizations that helps young people, I believe, from ages 12 to 18, uh, find, uh, the right paths to life to, to head down. It helps them with careers, it shows them things that they haven't experienced before. You Think, would you please stand and your soup, uh, chaperones? Let's give You Think, You Think a round of applause. Very, very impressive young people. Welcome. Do you know what, um, Mr. Laban has a very good suggestion here? And since the chambers are full, if I could ask everyone to rise, uh, in a moment of silence for those, uh, that, uh, were injured and lost their, their lives on the, uh, charter bus tour to the colleges, a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, now, Mr. Laban, I'd like to defer to you. Uh, I know you have a couple presentations. And, Mr. Laban, maybe before you begin, you can, uh, explain to us, uh, what fashion statement that, uh, you're making this morning? I don't know if that's a ascot or a t-shirt.
That's okay. That'll be in the second presentation. I, I really wanted to show my Dodger blue today, so I got to pull this out for my Dodger blue right there.
All right, Dodger blue.
So we're halfway there. But, Mr. President, thank you and thank you, all of us, for reflecting. Every day is a blessing. The, uh, and we had a blessing several years ago because this man, Duke Russell, who lives on Lucerne Boulevard in the Largemont District, a Hollywood High graduate, Ms. Martinez, who played in Single A baseball. I never got. California, I call it Single A, they don't remember. The, the fact is that this guy was a Dodger in 1947 and played in the, in the division up in Santa Barbara. And at that time, great history was made. And, uh, several, several years ago, he came in as a constituent and said, "We should have a Jackie Robinson Day." And it was, uh, just started out with Mayor Han, simple as it could be. But now it is absolutely, truly transformed. Uh, this is a wonderful resolution that I'm going to read. But this picture, which I'll show to the audience first, every, every National League player on Jackie Robinson Day is all wearing 42. And it all started from the love of Jackie Robinson, the work that Jackie did, uh, and breaking the color line. And I want Current Price, if you could, because as you know, uh, Mr. President, I'm going to be, uh, sent, not down to the minors, but out to the pastures, and I got to pass the baton. So, Mr. Price, if you could join me here as we make this presentation, because I'm counting on my teammates to take the ball when I can't do it. And, and, and this is, this is, uh, the original jacket right here. How old's that jacket now?
Well, it was 1947.
1947 jacket?
Warm-up jacket.
Warm-up jacket that Jackie gave to Mac?
Gave to Mac.
Her, her, her husband, Elano, her husband was Mac Robinson. And, you know, when you think there's one great athlete, two great athletes, Mac Robinson was an Olympian in Berlin in '36 and won the silver medal in the 220.
200 meters.
200 meters, but I'm an old guy, so I say 220, you'll know that. That's terrible, Herb.
No, that's fine.
200 meters. But, uh, this family is so special, they're from Pasadena and Jackie also, UCLA, all that connection that is there and the family that's here. But, Mr. Price, come in here with me, if you would, please. Duke Russell had this idea and this idea grew, grew, and grew. And that's the great thing about this place, that we allow the opportunity for people to come up with ideas and that they flourish. It's so wonderful. And on this 50th of April, we will have Jackie Robinson Day, its 13th annual day. And this is in commemoration when Jackie broke the color line, which is so important, how tough he had to be. And I remember talking to Don Newcombe, and he said, "Don Newcombe and Roy Campanella and Jackie were together with Dr. King, uh, out in, in, at the home having dinner. And, and Dr. King said, 'You guys had it much tougher than I did.'" You know, this is what Don Newcombe would say, because it was so tough being on a ball field, because even some of your players didn't have the right mind. They maybe knew how to hit a curveball, but they didn't know how to be good to people. And now this has transformed, because sports has transformed us. So we have this commend, commendation for you that lists all of this, that we know Jackie's great history at UCLA. But, Mr. Price, uh, great leaders, please say some remarkable words.
Let me just say how proud we are that this is Jackie Robinson Day. Uh, certainly, uh, Jackie Robinson continues to be not only a pioneer, but a positive role model to all of us. And so it's our honor, our pleasure to celebrate his legacy and his spirit of, uh, success and working together. He did it. Thank you.
And I want to ask first, Duke Russell, to say a few words, Duke.
Well, Jackie brought people together, peace, friendship, and humor. And for that, uh, it ought to have even been mentioned in the, in the Congress. He just was just a great person for this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Duke. Elano Robinson, Jackie's sister-in-law.
Yes, I'm just so thrilled to death. I just can't believe this has continued on for so long. It's just been so beautiful. We give a lot of presage, presence of thanks to Mr. Governor, and not Governor, but Mayor Tom Bradley. In 1973, he started this along with my friend Duke Russell to honor Jackie. And so all through the years, we've been continuing to do so because he did contribute not only to Los Angeles County, but to the world, along with my husband, Mac. They broke the color barriers that make it easy today so that our young men and women can really be able to get jobs and to be able to continue education and take advantage of the good things that are out there. And so make it easy for us to try to survive a little bit better than slavery. Thank you kindly for this honor. I appreciate it on behalf of Rachel and all of the Robinson family.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Kathy Robinson Young?
You know what? If I could just jump in for one second, I do want to, I, I don't have the words to articulate how grateful we are on the council, where it relates to Jackie and your husband, Mac. I, I truly believe because of what they've done, that's why you can look around this council and you see, you see us. If that barrier was not broken down, you know, Mr. Fuentes and I might not be here, or Mr. Parks, or Price, or Mr. Weezer. So all of that started with the, the great work that they did. So just thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Kathy Robinson Young. I'm Mac's daughter, Jackie's niece. And, um, on behalf of the foundation, Aunt Rachel from New York, we thank you again for having the family and having this great. the family, and having this great day, Jackie Robinson Day, again here in, in council chambers. Good morning, hello to the new council members that I don't know yet, wanting to get to know you. I brought along with me my daughter Brittany Hamilton.
Good job, Brittany.
My cousin Pauline McGriff Smith, and my mom, Mrs. Robinson. And I just wanted to say that Aunt Rachel started the foundation, the Jackie Robinson Foundation, a year after Uncle Jackie passed away. And we have one of the highest graduation rate of college students graduating in the four-year program. And we're very proud of, and of the success of the students that are matriculating through many colleges across the country. So again, in honor of my dad, Mac, and the entire Robinson family, thank you so much for, for the acknowledgements today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Labons.
Yeah, I just want to say, if anyone ever visits Pasadena City Hall, out in the courtyard, there's a great sculpture of both Mac and Jackie, which is so poignant. And from Pasadena, they hailed Muir High School, Mustangs from Muir High School, then PCC, and then also to UCLA. So, let's hear it for Jackie Robinson Day.
And, Mr. Labons, as an aside, our dog, Mandy, was adopted by a member of the Robinson crew. And we really appreciate that, so you, everybody should know that.
She hit a homerun today.
A grand slam. Miss, are you ready, or are you gonna go take pictures?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. President, I have a piece of advice for you. Earlier, you asked, you said, "Hey, Jose, when you do that in Los Angeles, half the room's gonna turn around." Thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, very excited today to recognize a real pillar of our community, not only for the Little Tokyo area of the city of Los Angeles, but also all of the city and the state. I am here today to have, very happy to have Brian Quito, who aside from being the president of the Historic Cultural Neighborhood Council, is also the owner of Fujitsu Do, a business that is celebrating its hundred-and-tenth anniversary this year, located right here in Little Tokyo. Let's give him and Fujitsu Do a big round of applause. Also here with me today are Helen Ota and Christie Sakamoto, members of the Grateful Crane Ensemble, a theater company based here in Little Tokyo. The Grateful Crane Ensemble produced and performed Nihon Mach, a performance based on the Quito family and their confectionery store. As the story goes, Fujitsu Do was founded in nineteen oh-three by Brian's grandfather, Seichi Quito. Seichi Quito was born in central Japan and came to the United States in May of nineteen oh-three, settling in the East First Street District of Los Angeles, now known as Little Tokyo. Fujitsu Do was opened in November of nineteen oh-three by Seichi and several friends to serve sweets, such as Manju and Mochi, for the Japanese community estimated at three thousand at that time. Fujitsu Do was managed alone by Seichi for twenty-five years, after his business partners passed away, and Seichi witnessed his business flourish, as did Little Tokyo. Fujitsu Do provided an anchor for Japanese culture by providing Little Tokyo with customary foods during the holidays that were also considered traditional gifts in the Japanese kutsu. It was later passed on to Roy, Seichi, and Tei's youngest son, who was born in nineteen twenty-one in the U.S. and educated in Japan, becoming what is known as KB1, born in the U.S. but raised and educated in Japan. Fujitsu Do was forced to liquidate in December seventh of nineteen forty-one, when, in one of the country's darkest hours, President Franklin Roosevelt signed Executive Order nine zero six six, forcing the evacuation of all people of Japanese ancestry. Fujitsu Do temporarily closed its doors when the Quito families were sent to an internment camp in Hart Mountain, Wyoming. But as we all know, Japanese-Americans not only sent their sons to fight and die for this country while they remained interned, they showed resilient spirit in doing all they could to regain their place in American society through hard work and determination once they were released. And so it was with Quito and the family. Fujitsu Do reopened in Little Tokyo with the help of the Tanahashi family on May five, nineteen forty-six, after Seichi worked as a waiter, making twenty cents an hour, in order to make enough money to retrieve Fujitsu Do's equipment from storage. Fujitsu Do temporarily moved to Second Street in nineteen fifty-six, when their current location was demolished, and later rebuilt with the generous help from Uncle Nob Masada and Bob Ing. Fujitsu Do was passed on to Brian Quito, Roy, and Kuzoko's Quito's youngest child, who promised to continue the family business past one hundred years. And folks, I'm happy to say that Brian has taken his family business well past one hundred years, with the legendary family business, as I said, now at a hundred and ten. Brian, thank you for preserving this historic and cultural landmark in Little Tokyo. I know that you've kept busy all this time in moving the business as through good times and bad, and that's happened not only because of your dedication, but also because what Fujitsu does for the community. The history of Fujitsu, your family, and the Little Tokyo, Little Tokyo are not only an important part of the Japanese history, they are an important part of American history. And you and your business represent a significant patch in the beautiful and diverse tapestry of Los Angeles' history, the kind that makes us all proud to call ourselves Angelinos. Congratulations on a hundred and ten years of delicious service to our city.
Congratulations.
Too long, but he had to say the story.
Thank you. Want to say a prayer?
Sure, thank you.
Brian said that was a long introduction, but it's a story worth telling, just given everything that has happened through this business and its contributions. But Brian, you want to share a few words?
First, I'd like to thank Councilman Weezer and his staff for giving us great honor, and also the rest of the city council. I've been very involved in the community, as, as Councilman Weezer said, president of the Historical Cultural Neighborhood Council, and hopefully, not only running my business, but I can help the city also. My grandfather settled here in Los Angeles in nineteen oh-three, and we're very proud to be Los Angelenos. And thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. I also want to thank the Grateful Crane Ensemble for lending their artistic talents to tell this great story that is here in Little Tokyo. I understand the play was entertaining, sad, and hilarious, all rolled up into one. So, on behalf of this city as well, we have some certificates for Helen and Christie, thanking you for your telling this story, and many other stories that your production company does, telling the story of Japanese-Americans here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, and thank you so much. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Guys, want to come back?
Thank you. Okay, as they exit, it's my understanding, we have an important introduction. Mr. Fuentes, do you have some gaster?
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues, and thank you for giving me a couple of minutes here to introduce, I think, some very important young people to you all in the city of Los Angeles. Just the other day, the Anderson School of Business at UCLA talked about the future of this economy, and it spoke to the types of jobs that this region would need. Most recently, we heard from our mayor of the State of Union, the State of the City address yesterday about the future of Los Angeles. And I think one element that we can all agree on is that we need to build our capacity with our human assets, with the people who inhabit Los Angeles, the future of Los Angeles, which is why I'm so excited to have created an internship program when I served in the legislature, and to continue the tradition here in City Hall. With me today, I have eleven interns hailing from different schools around the region, including Cal State Northridge and Los Angeles Mission College. They all enjoy different areas of study, including political science, urban planning, history, communications, and biology. All of these young people have been with my office since February of this year, and they're here today in City Hall to wrap up their presentations on all of the different projects that they've been working on for Council District Seven, and they'll be doing a presentation in my office. You're welcome to come, if you all want to hear from the bright minds and the future of Los Angeles. They're here today to learn a little bit about how City Hall works, and what it is to be in government, and the responsibility that we have to make sure that we're conveying not just our ministerial and administrative responsibilities, but adding value, which is what we're hearing about so much every single day, from those in the Vision Twenty Twenty Commission, to those in our community who want and need more from us. And so, I'm proud and excited to have them here with me. I wanted you all to take a good look behind me, because this is the future of Los Angeles. It's these young people, it's these bright young people that are gonna be occupying not just our chairs, but our space as leaders for this economy and this great state. Thank you, Mr. President, and give these young people a big round of applause.
And, Mr. Price, after this, I'll get directly to you.
All righty, Mr. President, I do have another presentation. If I could have our different city family members join me behind the podium here. I wanted to, colleagues, recognize also another group of folks. It's not to say that they're the past, they're the present of Los Angeles, the folks who are helping us navigate this great city into the future. Today, I want to recognize members of the city family, the city departments, who are advancing our water sustainability by declaring today One Water Day. Many of you know that water is not just a precious resource, but it's one that we have the ability to recycle, to reuse, to conserve. And we heard the challenge yesterday by our very own mayor, that he would like for all of us to reduce our need to have to buy fifty percent of our water from imports. And today, many of you know that we import, we buy eighty-eight percent of our water supply. And so, we need to figure out how to do better, and the challenge was laid out yesterday. You know that Los Angeles has complex water needs. The city relies on, as I mentioned, eighty-eight percent of its water from imports. Pollutants and stormwater runoff degrade the water quality of our rivers and our ocean, and the city's water infrastructure is aging. These are just some of the issues that Los Angeles must tackle, and the current drought further exasperates and underscores our need to be smarter about this very, very precious resource. To address these challenges, a number of city departments and the, are working together as a One Water Los Angeles, bringing forward a strategy called the Los Angeles One Water Twenty Forty Strategy. The One Water concept promotes integrated water resource planning for wastewater, stormwater, water conservation, and water reuse, in order to effectively manage our limited water supply in a more sustainable and comprehensive manner. The One Water Initiative is a collaboration of city departments, including LADWP, Bureau of Sanitation, Bureau of Engineering, the Department of Recreation and Parks, and the Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety, and so many others that are helping us in this endeavor. In last week's Energy and Environment Committee meeting, the Department of Water and Power and the Bureau of Sanitation reported on its efforts on this One Water Initiative. The departments are currently conducting outreach to each of our neighborhoods and community groups, to include them in the development of the One Water guiding principles. I believe that this work isn't just important, members, but it's really critical to the future success of Los Angeles, because we all need water. Conversations like the one that we're having today are taking place in many other cities. Earlier this week, water agencies from around the country, including representatives from the great city of Los Angeles, met in Washington, D.C. as part of Water Week two thousand fourteen, to advocate for national policies that promote safe and clean water. Los Angeles can be and has been and will continue to be a leader in water use, and I look forward to the continued work of this One Water Initiative. With that, colleagues, please join me in supporting the One Water Initiative and declaring April eleventh, two thousand fourteen, as One Water Day.
Thank you, Councilman Fuentes. Thank you to Mr. President, thank you to the rest of the council. Your leadership is what really moves us forward. Los Angeles became its great city because of water. Our responsibility today is to continue protecting this valuable resource, which is called water. Our stakeholders, our residents, told us we need to better protect our valuable resources, the scarce resources, financial, water, everything that we have, we have to protect it. And through this one water planning, we are doing, we are doing that. We are leveraging resources, we are doing more with less, to provide a way to address flooding, a way to address water quality, a way to reuse water, a way to augment water supply, and then at the end of the day, provide a better place for our Angelinos to live and enjoy and become healthy. The examples that we've done through Proposition O is an example of what's possible. The, the projects we did in Sun Valley, in South LA, in East LA, all of them are examples of what we can do to make this city a great city. And what makes this special, this is a collaboration. This is a way of working together with our partners in the Department of Water and Power and the city departments as a whole, but also working with the community, because what we want to do is to build something that will move us forward, that we, that can protect our children, grandchildren. And we're asking our residents of Los Angeles, our community partners in Los Angeles, to join us and to be part of this process, because we need to shape the future of Los Angeles, and we need their input. I'm excited about the future, we're all excited about the future. I know with your leadership, your support, and the support of the mayor, and, and the entire city, we will become a great city that is managing its resources efficiently, and taking care of our valuable resources, and making this place a better place to live. I know we have many stakeholders in the community here, and I think they're behind us, but I want to ask my partner in the Department of Water and Power, Marty Adams, to say a couple of words.
Thank you. And the Department of Water and Power greatly appreciates the council taking this action and recognizing, recognizing the importance of water supply. As we know, we're in the third year of a very bad drought. We had about a third of the rainfall that we normally get land in the state, and it's critical that everybody in Los Angeles takes this seriously, and really steps up to meet the needs of the future. The Department of Water and Power is excited to work with the rest of the city family on this effort, and we are committed to ensuring the water future of LA. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, colleagues. That's gonna conclude the presentation, but I do just want to underscore a couple of points here. This is not just sort of all of us patting these departments on the back. They deserve it, they've been doing tremendous work. But this is ultimately about conserving a very precious resource, recognizing that water is just so precious to the success of Los Angeles. And for the ratepayers, for those watching at home, for the people who have to pay their monthly bills, we know that importing water at nine hundred and eighty-four dollars an acre foot's very expensive. When we were able to get it out of the ground at a third of the price, it's not just good politics, good policy, good sense, but it's also an opportunity for us to protect Los Angeles' future. We have to employ every strategy out there. We're gonna have to do this, we're gonna have to participate in the state conversation on water, and we're gonna have to show the initiative in our own homes in reducing our water usage and understanding what a precious resource it is. So with that, colleagues, take the message home with you, make sure that you tell everybody how important water is, and conserve. Thank you very much.
Mr. Labons.
Very good, Mr. Fuentes. Two things you need in life is water and relationships, and it's so important. Mr. Fuentes, thanks for bringing to our attention Adele, great leadership. Mr. Enrique Saldivar, thank you. But I really want to thank Tracy. Tracy, step up here. Tracy, Tracy Minamita is responsible for the High Period Sewer Treatment Plan. If the plan doesn't work, we don't work. And I want to thank her, One Water. And last thing, I was under the Sixth Street Bridge this week, there's a lot of water going down the river. Let's catch it, let's dam it up, let's reuse it upstream. One Water, go, all the way. the way.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Labange, and a special thanks to the department and in particular to Mr. Fuentes. Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, and members of the public today. Later this year, July the 26th and 27th, to be exact, District Nine is wanting to host the Central Avenue Jazz Festival. And it's in that spirit that I'd like to introduce my guest today, Mr. Erwin Mayfield, a Grammy and Billboard winning artist with 15 albums to his credit. He's also the founding artistic director of the New Orleans Jazz Orchestra and currently serves as the artistic director of jazz at the Minnesota Orchestra. A passionate advocate for New Orleans and for the arts, he is the founder of the New Orleans Jazz Orchestra, a performing arts organization whose goal is to strengthen the business of jazz through performances, tours, recordings, education, and media platforms. They just wrapped up a two-day tour here in Los Angeles, visiting schools and inspiring and encouraging young people to pursue the arts. So ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome him today and thank him for his contribution to the arts in our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much for spending time with us today. Thank you very much. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move that we suspend the rules and reconsider Item 25 from our last meeting on April 9th relative to adjustments for salaries for non-represented employees. This is Council File 14-0409.
Okay, let's open the rolls on suspending the rules. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now let's open the roll on reconsideration for the Item 25. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now that item is before us. Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, an amending motion, which is 25A, has been circulated for Item 25, and I ask that you approve it. The amendment adopts a new ordinance which deletes the issue of general manager salaries from the overall action. Yes.
Okay, let's open the roll on 25A, I believe it is. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now let's open the roll on 25 as amended. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, forthwith to the mayor on that item. All items today, I've been instructed. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President and members, thank you very much. We're here again at the podium because today is Arts Day in LA 2014, okay? And it's a day that we salute the arts. I have two great elected officials here. I have Ron Galperin, who's our city comptroller, who I'm going to ask him to kick off a little, and Bennett Kaiser, a member of the school board who also effectively works. Mr. City Comptroller.
Let's give a round of applause to our great comptroller. Go Ron, go Ron.
Good morning, everybody. As I was walking in here, I was amazed and impressed by how many of the red t-shirts and how many people who are in the building supporting the arts. So the arts are in the house this morning. Give yourself a hand. Thank you, Council President Weston, members of the city council for inviting me to be here today, and thank you also to Councilmember Labange as we celebrate the rich tradition of the arts and of the culture that we have in America's creative capital, Los Angeles. I'd like to thank Arts for LA for their leadership and for your passion, for your advocacy for the arts, and along with the community members who came here today. Each of you are an important, a vital voice. I came here personally because I am a lover of the arts in its many forms, and as comptroller, I'm also focused on making sure that we get the best ROI, the best return for investment on the money that the city collects and the money that the city spends. Now, the arts are, and the creative community that we have, yield a significant return on investment for the city of Los Angeles. They are an integral part of our economy and our quality of life. They create jobs, attract visitors, enhance the civic landscape. 351,000-plus people in LA County work directly in the creative industries, and LA County's creative economy generated $6.2 billion in tax revenue in 2012. Those are the kind of numbers that I like to hear about. Now, to correspond with Arts Day, I'm also releasing this morning an audit of the city's 1% for arts programs, which were created to fund public art across the landscape of our city. My audit found that money collected from property developers to pay for the arts projects has unfortunately languished in the Arts Development Fee Fund. Previous program guidelines and interpretations of the law have been an impediment, quite frankly, to more than $10 million being put to the use and benefit for our arts communities. My recommendations work hand in hand with motions that were cosponsored by Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, Councilmember Weezear, and I thank them very much for this, as well as the work that we've been doing with the city attorney's office. And we look forward to seeing an update and improvement of the guidelines. A lot of these have already been discussed, and I believe this is going to make one of the biggest differences in seeing that money put to good use. And I've been told by Councilmember Tom Labange to give a shout out to Joel Wax, who used to be in this chamber and has been a great father of arts programming in Los Angeles. So many thanks to Arts LA for your focus on this issue over the years and for the council's attention. As the great American painter Robert Henry once said, "The object isn't to make art, it's to be that wonderful state which makes art inevitable." Thank you very much, and have a great Art Day.
Good job there, Ron. Great job. And Bennett Kaiser.
Artistically stated, Mr. Comptroller. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the best things, one of the best things about being a school board member is visiting the schools and watching the kids in their classrooms, and especially when it's an arts class, and they're smiling, and they're happy, and they're creative, and they're doing work. It's wonderful. Thanks for having Arts Day today.
Great. Thank you very much. We have a couple of members on the queue. Mr. Labange.
Yeah, but we haven't made the presentation, so cool your jets there.
Oh, and I'm just letting you know. I'm just letting you know.
Here's the thing.
It's all yours. The floor is yours, sir.
Many people who come down right now, I want to call on Danielle Brazil, who really is the executive director of Arts for LA, but has done so many things for arts. Daniela, come on up here right now.
All right, we're running out of time, so I'm going to say this. I'm going to say, first of all, like you, we care about Los Angeles. Like you, we are deeply committed to our communities, and like you, we want everyone to have access to health, safe neighborhoods that are prosperous. And we believe that the arts do that. And I would just like to say, how many of yous, first time here for Arts Day in LA, how many of you is a first time in city council? And how many of you vote on a regular basis? This is what I want to see. We are absolutely engaged. We are absolutely informed, and we want to be here to make sure that everyone has access to the arts. And I want to give a huge shout out to the Department of Cultural Affairs. Without them, we wouldn't exist.
Great. Thank you very much. I believe you found every single voter in the city of Los Angeles. They're all in chambers today.
One of the great members of our community, Antonio Hernandez.
Thank you and good morning. As you know, the California Community Foundation recognizes the arts humanize cities, inject life, beauty, and stimulate critical exchange in the region where we live and work. The art produced here is like nothing else in the world because art here is influenced by our traditional immigrant heritage. And artists from around the world come here to study and work and are then influenced by the diversity. I think I've been booed. Thank you.
Not Antonio. California Community Foundation. Keep going.
As the foundation that values the power of art, especially its ability to bring people together, to celebrate our commonalities and diversity, we also recognize the financial struggle our artists and art organizations face. For the past 25 years or since 1988, CCF has supported over 215 of LA's emerging and mid-career visual artists working in a multitude of media and forums with over $2 million in grants and access to business development. If we want to continue to have great art in our city, to experience it in our everyday life, to have it created here, to have artists working in our communities and living in our neighborhoods, then we must support the arts. Thank you very much.
Keith McNutt from the Actors Fund.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I'm here in my capacity as a Stanton fellow from the Durfee Foundation about a report I wrote called "LA Creates." This was a study that involved about 140 interviews around LA and around the world. And what one of the recommendations that I've been asked to talk about is branding our region as the creative capital of the country. A lot of the interviewees that I talked about had concerns that the storytelling capital of the world is not effectively telling its story, and we should be creating and owning a narrative of greatness. It has implications for tourism, for businesses coming in, for citizens having a sense of pride, belonging, and aspiration for what they want their city to be. So the report lays out a sample brand that's based on what people told me were some of the pitfalls in the past. It needs to be simple and brief. It needs to be active and future-oriented. And most importantly, it needs to be broadly adaptive and inclusive, so that it includes not only the city of LA, but all of the 88 municipalities in the region. It includes not just film and television, but all of the industries that have a role in creating LA. Santa Monica creates LA, Boyle Heights creates LA, Long Beach creates LA, film and television creates LA, manufacturing creates LA, and international trade creates LA. We want an aspiration that everybody owns, everybody takes responsibility for, and everybody aspires to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Get a copy for all the, Keith, I want copies all around for all the staff. From Cedar Sinai and the Cedar Sinai Center Arts Council, Dr. Bruce Samuel.
Thank you. You may wonder why is a cardiologist from Cedar Sinai here? It's not because this man is faint, although I'm here if he needs me. In 1966, one of the great power couples of Los Angeles, Fred and Marcia Weisman, were dining at the Polo Lounge, and Fred got hit over the head in a very famous society incident and ended up at Cedar Sinai with bleeding on his brain and had to have emergency surgery. When he woke up from a coma, he didn't recognize anybody, didn't recognize his wife where he was, and she brought in a Jackson Pollock painting of theirs, and he recognized the piece of artwork. And because of that experience, Marcia, in all of her wisdom, she founded Mocha down the street. She was an incredible force in the LA art community and has touched many people here, but she believed that art should be part of the healing environment in a hospital. And it was an amazing moment where she donated hundreds of her own works, Jackson Pollock's, Andy Warhol's, Roy Lichtenstein's, and she convinced artists, friends of hers, and collectors of hers to donate artwork so that the hospital itself could be beautified, not just beautified, but also provide a healing environment. And since that time, we formed a council. The work has grown, and it's one of our best-kept secrets here in LA that we have created a program which not only allows us to grow in terms of our magnitude of our artwork, but has also created a healing place and space for our staff, as well as for our patients and their families. We now have over 5,000 works all donated by generous people here in the community and by artists themselves. We've also grown to include public works, and now on San Vicente and George Burns Drive in the Medical Center, we have a new commitment to having large public works that will engage the rest of the city. And we are now in a program that's very dear to my heart, providing medical care for artists who can't afford it, because we believe we believe that what we've started is not interior decorating. We believe seriously that artwork in our hallways is an integral part of the healing that goes on, as important as the medicine and the doctors who come to these patients. And we have started something that has spread like wildfire. We now have two national meetings that go on every single year about artwork in a healthcare environment. That all started with Marcia Simon Weisman back in 1966, and we're the model for hospitals all over the world. If we can bring artwork at a time when people are incredibly dejected, sick, scared, and terrified, think how wonderful it'll be if we can have artwork in our everyday life all over the city.
Doctor, thank you very much. And from our corporate sponsors, Jim Schultz from the Boeing Company.
Thank you. And I just want to remind you, we do have a couple of members that want to speak on this as well.
Good morning, and I'm Jim Schultz, the director of Boeing Satellite Development Center in El Segundo, California, home of the world's largest integrated satellite factory, and employer of the most highly skilled and creative workforce in the industry. I am here to express my interest in the importance of arts in STEM education. As a young man and son of an engineer, I was always drawn to math and science, but it was my mother who forced me to pick up an instrument and get involved in theater. I was fortunate to attend a high school and be part of a community that plays such a high importance and value on arts programs. I know that my success as an engineer and as a leader is in great part because of the skills that I developed in those activities, being part of a team, exercising my creative mind, instilling discipline from the practices of art and music, and shaping my social and communication skills through live performance. The ability to communicate, to be part of a team, to achieve success, to learn from failure, to collaborate with a diverse group of individuals to achieve greatness are why I am in the position I am at the Boeing Company. Arts education and what we do at Boeing are highly integrated because we rely on creativity and innovation to do what others can only dream of doing. Our ongoing investment in arts education as a means of developing a creative, critical-thinking workforce in Los Angeles show how valuable and vital arts education is in our business and to our collective future. We support STEAM for that reason. And we thank you, the city council, for your support as well.
Great. Thank you.
Last speaker, we get there, Ms. Alexandra Grant, one of the great artists, born in our sister city, Mexico City.
Good morning. I'm a painter who lives in District One, Councilmember Gilbert Cedeos Territory, and my studio is in and my studio is in District 10 under the auspices of City Council President Herb J. Wesson Jr. I've lived in Los Angeles since 2001, when I moved here because I thought this was the luckiest city an artist could work in, and I don't mean that lightly. Luck is something that you work for, but it is also something that you are given. When you are in a position of power relative to others, you can create luck for other people. Call it what you will, paying it forward, investing in the social fabric or philanthropy. I've experienced that luck here in LA through exhibitions at Mocha and LACMA by receiving the California Community Foundation Mid-Career Artist Grant. Generosity is also what we, as artists, do with our work. We create moments of luck, moments that take us out of our daily grinds and ruts and depths and lift our heads up to think, wow, this is beauty. This is freedom. That's what art does. It provides an economy of equality through the eyeballs and the fingertips and the ears and in the gut, if even for a moment. Now more than ever, the world is looking to Los Angeles as the center of creative work, from the art world to the Philharmonic and on. Now is the time to invest. Now is the time to invest, to make luck for those who think of themselves as at the margin, whether they are from Watts or from some far-flung corner of the valley. Councilmembers, you can make luck for Angelinos by putting art back into schools and communities, by supporting the nonprofits and museums that do that work, and the artists who become our ambassadors to the world. I am here to ask you to create luck, and by that I mean to sow the seeds of beauty, equality, and opportunity in the heads of the many, many artists you have in your districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, thank you. Let's give them all another round of applause. Now in the queue, we've got Councilwoman Martinez. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just want to express my appreciation. So many of you were so instrumental in getting our Arts at the Core curriculum and resolution passed at LA USC when I, when I was there. Thank you so much to Danielle and Arts for LA for your commitment. We need to continue to ensure that the plan gets implemented and that we have the resources to get it done. It's so important for our kids and all of the work that you collectively did to advocate for that piece of legislation. Thank you so much for everything that you do, and don't ever forget, art is at the heart of smart.
And one more, Councilmember Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Labange, Mr. O'Farrell, and everybody who made Arts Day in Los Angeles a possibility. I want to take a moment and acknowledge a couple of delegates from Council District Seven. Pacoima Murilis Levi Ponce, nationally recognized artist Diana Coen, Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council Entertainment Industry Representative Kristi Clark, co-founder of Dia Chucha Central Cultural and Bookstore, Trini Rodriguez, former rep and majority Arts Center Board Member Ed Novi, Dia Chucha's Bookstore Coordinator Silverio Pelayo, and Dia Chucha's Outreach Coordinator Margarita Lopez. All of you have made a tremendous commitment, along with your colleagues who are here today, to the arts and to Los Angeles. And we know, simply put, this is an important area of our culture. And some of the numbers that back that up, we know that over 650,000 jobs in Los Angeles, one in seven by some measures, are in the creative sector and creative industries. That generates over $200 million, billion dollars in sales revenue to the region. That in of itself is important because we like numbers in government and we like to know what it means. But the unspoken part about what you all do, the creativity, is that you all tickle that right side of the brain. And we're taught in schools to think with the left side and to be linear and to speak to sort of linear thinking. And that's all well and good for the past, but the future dictates creativity. It dictates innovation. It dictates the ability for you all to be on the cutting edge, and art does that. It tickles that right side of the brain. And so our future, our ability to teach young people, the leadership that's going to have to replace all of us in short order, is going to have to be creative. It's going to have to be innovative, and it's going to have to be, as Ms. Martinez mentioned, smart. And so art does that. And I want to congratulate each and every one of you for your endeavors and for teaching those that follow you on how to do all of the amazing things that you do. Give yourselves a big round of applause. Thank you so much, Mr. Labange and Mr. O'Farrell for being here.
Can I say one quick thing?
Mr. Bonn.
Mr. Bonn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I think everything really has been said here today, except I want to note how I want to celebrate and commemorate Arts Day in Los Angeles. I'm going to do it tonight by taking a walk. I'm going to take a walk. I'm going to do it through Venice. And I'm going to walk and I'm going to look at all of the new murals that have emerged on the streets of Los Angeles and in our neighborhoods since this council passed the new mural ordinance. They are springing up in almost every neighborhood, splashes of color and personality and culture telling the stories of this city and of its people. It's a thing to behold. I'll be taking my walk in Venice. I encourage everybody else to take a walk and see the new stories and the new expression in their neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Great, thank you.
Just want to thank you. It's very special. I want to thank Mr. O'Farrell because I'm going to be pushing it onto him. I wore this for sanitation, but I wore this for arts in LA. Hot there. And also, I got to give a shout-out, Mr. President, to Ed and especially Albert and Dean, all down in Creative Services, because the greatest art in the city hall comes from our calligraphers, because today is Art Day in LA!
Absolutely. Fantastic. Thank you, Tom.
Good job, right.
Another round of applause for all the artists that came out today.
Everybody put their hands on. Put your hands on. Hands on, hands on. Hands on.
Hey, Tom, forget Arts Day in LA. One day isn't enough. It's every day should be Arts Day in LA. Absolutely. 365 days a year. Thank you so much. We're going to run through some of the agenda items. Colleagues, if we could, Mr. Clark, what do we have before us?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number two, called Special for Councilmember Buscagno.
Okay, item two.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I strongly urge an i-vote on item number two. I know around this horseshoe, we often hear questions and comments about the validity of offering rewards and asking members of the public to come forward with information leading to the arrests of perpetrators and illegal dumping graffiti and eventually offering standing rewards for hit-and-run crimes. Today, however, I'm happy to highlight this item on the agenda as it serves as a reminder that reward motions can and do work, and they are a valuable tool to law enforcement.
If we can, if we can ask those making their way out of council chambers to just, I know they're artistic, but to keep the voices down just a little bit, this is really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. These rewards serve as a valuable tool to law enforcement, no matter how long it takes to make arrests and bring criminals to justice. In this particular case, Mario Jackson and Tierney Yates were murdered inside the Magic Wheels Private Club located at 100974 South Broadway. LAPD goes on to report that subsequent to the offer of the reward, a witness indicated that he knew the identity of the killer. Sharon McMichael, a Raymond Avenue Crip Street gang member, admitted to the witness that he had shot and killed the victims. The LA County District Attorney's Office filed two counts of murder on McMichael because of the information provided to the witnesses. The suspect was arrested and eventually pled guilty to two counts of voluntary manslaughter and was sentenced to 30 years in prison. The witness testified at both the preliminary hearing and the jury trial. LAPD believes that the information provided by the witness was crucial to the arrest and conviction of the suspect. I want to thank the individuals that came forward with the information that led to the arrest and conviction of Sharon McMichael, and remind everyone in this city, if you see something, say something. Do the right thing, get your reward, and do your part to make our city a better place to live, visit, and work. I again ask for an i-vote to move this item forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I just want to thank the person also that came forward. And again, as you stated, you know, it's claimed often that these rewards don't lead into the apprehension and conviction, and here is a good case in point where it did. So I appreciate that. Colleagues, we'll go ahead and open the roll on paying out this reward. Close the roll and tab, oh, we have one speaker, accidental button push by Mr. Coretts, or not?
Actually, I only wanted to say exactly what you just said, so I, I think we often get criticized for offering these rewards and them not being implemented, and in fact, they often are implemented and we found the perpetrator as a result, so.
Yes, thank you.
I'm proud of this process, as you mentioned.
And proud of this individual that spoke up. Thank you so much. And close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
I believe that Mr. Buscagno wanted that fourth with as well. That'll be the order without objection. And the next item, please.
That brings us to item number six, called Special for Cards.
Six for Cards. We're only going to have one minute for Cards today as we have an issue and quorum issues, and we've still got a heavy agenda, and it's right before the recess. I'd like to set the clock and have Mr. Walsh come up, please.
Stay tuned. That crime happened seven years ago. One, one reward in seven years. They didn't mention it happened seven years ago. Okay, this is the number six. This is removing reap. We're 100% in favor of this. And go in and read number two. Seven years.
Stay right there, Mr. Walsh. We're going to, John, come back up if you would. We're going to put three more minutes on your clock. You've got item seven, eight, and nine. If you want to go ahead and speak on those while you're up there.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. If you want any more information about the reward they just awarded,
We're on, item seven.
I'll put it on my tweet. Number seven, again, this is block grants. This is federal money. Before, the block grants would only pass through the CRA. The CRA would take 30% or 40% of the money for bureaucracy. Now that we killed the CRA, destroyed it thanks to Mayor, Governor Brown, remember, our psychotic ravings are now echoed by Governor Brown. CRA dead. As a result, when the community service block grant federal money comes, it isn't skimmed off the top anymore by the mayor's appointees over at the dead CRA. It goes directly to what we wanted it to go to. And take a look at all the good things that are happening with the federal money. Of course, we know that my neighborhood, where it's all white, is getting the money that the black neighborhood should have gotten in promised zones because of that, Mr. Kenya, Barack Obama. Number eight is, again, this is more block grants. This is very important information. Again, this money is always coming through. I know you people want to go to lunch. You don't want to hear from me, so I'm going to give you a gift of one minute and 20 seconds. I don't want to see when I'm up here, one minute and one second, for it counting as two minutes. I'm giving you one minute and 20 seconds. Hollywood Highlands.
We appreciate that. Thank you. And with that, we'll go ahead and bring up Arnold Sachs. Seven and nine.
Mr. President.
I'm sorry, you got seven, eight, and nine.
Mr. President, before I top, can you clarify what the status is? Last meeting in Van Nuys, the special meeting, you made a ruling that special meeting is now part of...
If you want to ask that under general public comment, but right now you're up between seven, eight, and nine.
I want to know because I have time on this and I have time on my special meeting.
I'm going to start, can you go ahead and start the clock, please?
I can't use, speak on both items.
Seven, eight, nine, you got a minute on each.
But I can't, if I speak on those, then I won't be able to speak in a special agenda. And if I speak on a special agenda, then I can't use that.
You'll be given time on the special agenda.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's all I ask. Thank you. So quite a different opinion on community block development funds. I think this is like the 45th or 46th, excuse me, 42nd year act of this funds going on. And the county, in the last couple of years, has had an action plan where they've rolled over almost 25% of the community development block grant funds that they get. So how's the city doing? And in regards to the redevelopment funds that were mentioned, I believe the mayor, the last, not the previous mayor, Viergoza, when the funding was cut, the words out of his mouth, well, we're going to lose $900 million in redevelopment funds. I've never heard that number come up in front of the council. As a matter of fact, I've never heard anything or seen anything done with any of that redevelopment funding as far as it relates to the council or the city and some of the neighborhoods that could use it. And then item number eight, wait, excuse me, item number eight refers to the EEOC, I believe, the block grant, for the Energy Efficient and Conservation Block Grant. You know who had part of that? The DWP. And you know where they got that money from? That was ARA funding. That was America Fast Forward funding that was going to provide jobs, shovel-ready jobs to repair the streets in the city of LA. And whatever happened to that? Oh, well, the contracts weren't made conducive to allow for subjective bidding. So here we come back, five years later, now the city wants to have sent sales tax to repair the street, but nobody ever found out what happened to the money that they got from ARA to repair the streets. More budgeting. And then item number nine refers to One Water Day in the city of Los Angeles, advancing the sustainability of the city of Los Angeles in the water usage. So I'm wondering, you know, if you read the downtown news, they talk about 88 projects that are being constructed in the city of downtown LA. Most are housing, apartments, complexes. How is the water usage done there? How is figured out? It's not like a single-family residence where you get X amount of dollar, you get X amount of water, or hotels that are being built. They don't have a subjective amount of water that they are allowed to use. Actually, they have unlimited water, I believe, that they're allowed to use. So with all this usage, how is sustainability...
Great, thank you very much. Sean, come on up on items eight and nine.
Yes, good morning. Item eight is a good item. Item nine is a good item, too. I'm for them.
Great, thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we'll go ahead. Oh, we have one more card. I apologize. Dr. Williams, item nine.
Which item?
Item nine.
Nine. Okay, can I have a few seconds back? Okay, item nine, One Water. Can we have a One Water bill? Because right now, One Water has a problem. We don't know how much it's going to cost, even in a rough order of magnitude. It's, a lot of planning is being done, a lot of money is being spent, but what's going to be the total capital cost? Something like Propo? Hey, 500 million. Well, extrapolate from 500 million up. Also, what is going to be the annual operations, maintenance, and financial charges that the city of Los Angeles residents will have to pay? We're quite concerned about the cost. Lot of support for this project, but there's a problem of...
Great, thank you very much. With that, we'll go ahead, any colleagues, there's no speakers on the queue, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Clark, where does that take us?
Mr. President, that takes us to either today's special meeting or general public comment for item not on council's agenda.
Let's go to the special meeting. Okay, we'll go ahead and go to the special meeting. Thank you.
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield Bonner, Buscagno, Cedejo, Angela Fuentes, Vizara, Kareska, Corinne Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Twelve members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Clerk. 12. Okay, I want to go to item 12. Mr. Walsh.
And, Mr. President, before doing so...
Ellen Isaacs.
Items 12 through 15 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection. Those items are before us. So like I said, we're going to do 12, and I called up three speakers, Mr. Macbeth, Walsh, Isaacs, and Adole. Yes, Mr. Walsh? John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns protection of a Canary Island pine tree, adding it to the historical cultural monuments on Martin Luther King. That's where you tore up all... On Martin Luther King, that's where you tore up all the signs so you could bring the big space capsule through that area to the... But here, fine. In Hollywood, we like every single palm tree that was put up there in the 1920s, because palm trees are not indigenous to California. They're indigenous to Australia. That's where they came from. We like also, this, our palm trees, we like every, every street tree in the city, not just this particular Canary Island pine tree, to become an historic cultural monument. Okay, so I had, is there Mr. Jim Macbeth? Please come forward now. When I call your name, Ellen Isaacs, Ms. Isaacs, are you here? Come forward. Gwyneth Dole, come forward, please. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Jim Macbeth. I'm a business owner on Crenshaw, 5444 Crenshaw. Many of you probably know the building. It was the building that the Obama administration had their office there for the last two elections. I'm very concerned about the trees, the current areas trees, that's going to be removed. Those trees have been there for many years. I first moved to Crenshaw in 1972 and started a business there. So I've been there that long, and I've seen these trees grow for a number of years. So I'm very concerned, because it's an icon for the Crenshaw district, those trees are. So we're very concerned about replacing them. We know they are talking about putting trees, there are two to one to replace some of those trees. But, as you know, those trees are probably 40 or 50 years old, and to replace those with...
Thank you, thank you, sir. Now, where's Ms. Isaacs, followed by Ms. Dole, followed by, is it a Charles Bouvner?
Charles Buvoir.
Buvoir.
Mr. President.
Sorry.
Mr. Council President, we will waive our time. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. David McNeil? Kim Marie Johnson Rousseau?
Good morning, Council. Councilmember, President Wesson. My name is David McNeil. I live and work in the Baldwin Hills. I have been a resident of the Crenshaw community for most of my life, and I'm proud of our community's interest in preserving and protecting the unique and cultural legacy that is held by these Canary Island pines. In my work with the Conservancy, we strive to protect the last large open space in the Bionic watershed. The end result, I'm certain, will be a legacy that's enjoyed by future generations. But today, I do want to recognize the early pioneers of the stewardship in LA. My friend Lornie Jackson Russell sends her mother's heartfelt message about a memorial, she called a memorial fit for a king. In her words, "I just received notice today of today's hearing and printed up the material for my mother, Udora Russell, who celebrated her 90th birthday on April 1st. She was pleased that the memorial is being recognized, an expansion of the 1990 project." She said, "That's wonderful," and she jotted down these words on her notepad. "Congratulations to all the inclusive approach of honoring the 1990 historical planning of 500 trees."
Wrap it up.
"I approve," she says.
Okay, now, I can't, if I give you more, I have to give everybody more, so I'm sorry. Was it Ms. Russell, Rousseau, Rousell, Lark Galloway Gilliam, and a Carl Morgan? Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Kim Marie Johnson Rousseau, and I'm a stakeholder in the area that we're speaking of. And my comment is just about, I saw Jackie Robinson being honored, and I see a lot of these black people, civil rights members, being honored. And these trees were put in honor of Martin Luther King. And I don't understand why is it so easy and so flippant to just remove the trees that were put to honor someone that did something for not just, for the United States, I mean, for the black community. And the fact that these trees are in a black community, I consider this to be a travesty of someone to just come and remove or change the trees or move the trees for whatever reason when it was put there to honor someone. I mean, would we change the Lincoln Memorial because someone decided, had a reason? I mean, these things were put there to honor, and they should be there, they should stay there. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Lark Galloway Gilliam. I'm a member of the Empowerment Congress West Area. I'm also the executive director of Community Health Council with a very strong commitment to preserving the health of our community. As you may know, this motion came before you as a result of a settlement agreement that we reached with the city of Los Angeles, then Mayor Vierigosa, to establish monument trees along Martin Luther King Boulevard. And thanks to Councilman Wesson, they were gonna take 76 of those trees out. We were able to preserve them, as well as those along Crenshaw Boulevard. It is clear that all of these Canary Pine trees, particularly those along MLK and the section on Crenshaw Boulevard, were a part of this effort. The trees on Crenshaw in particular were established in memorial to many of the members, including those mentioned by David earlier. It is important that you understand that this is an important designation for our community, and we ask for your support today in establishing this historical monument. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Please identify yourself. And you're followed by, is it Theodore Thomas Senior? Please come up. Yes, sir.
Carl Morgan. I just returned from Texas to celebrate the 50th anniversary of the 1964 Civil Rights Act with four of our living presidents. And I am ashamed to stand here today to witness the LA City Council with its first black council president and one of the first black chiefs of police, and on Jackie Robinson Day, vote against the historic status of the largest living memorial monument to Martin Luther King Jr. Please be aware that the headlines, the blogs, Facebook posts, Twitter messages will all read that LA City Council members vote to dishonor Martin Luther King Jr. Mayor Vierigosa promised this monument status, and it agreed to MOU between the neighborhood councils, the California Science Center, and the city. A council-generated motion that was initiated by you, Council President Wesson, and now the same body no longer supports this agreement for some no-known reason. At the Cultural Heritage Commission, which...
Your time is up, and I do believe this motion will be to save those trees. And, anyway, go, go right ahead.
Okay, my name is Theodore Thomas Senior. I'm president of Park Mesa Heights Community Council, where, on Crenshaw, where most of the trees are being taken down. I really, the Canary Pine trees have been there for over 44 years, and they are 70 feet tall. I don't see how that we can vote against these trees from being taken out of the community as a part of the community. They have been there. I've lived in the community for over 45 years. I'm a resident there, and the community is really upset. If you're gonna take the trees down, you need to go down Crenshaw and look at the trees as a part of the community. And it'll take another 45 years for those trees to grow mature to the size they are today. They are over 70 feet tall, and it's part of the neighborhood. And we would like for the council to vote to keep the trees there. We want to know why are the trees being taken out? Could anybody answer that from the council?
Thank you. Do you have a card? Come forward, I didn't see your name. Yes.
Rusty Millar with the Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. The definition of a stakeholder includes substantial and ongoing participation within the neighborhood council boundaries. I'm also a member of the Los Angeles Front Runners, which is an LBGT running and walking organization. And this minority organization raises thousands of dollars a year, which we donate money to organizations that serve the minority community, such as Minority Age Project, Friends of Project 10, Project Angel Food. This, in 2001, we started a chili cook-off at my home in Silver Lake. And the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment is denying us a status as stakeholder organization to be able to vote in the neighborhood council election. This is the IEA and the general manager in the Neighborhood Empowerment Office. So, once again, minority organizations have an extra bar to jump over to be able to vote, one of the most American of rights in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
We gotta clarify.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, if I may, amending motion 12A has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Maybe if you speak to what amending motion 12A does, it may elevate the comfort level of some of the individuals that are in the room.
Absolutely, sir. Amending motion 12A declares portions of the property, including Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard between Hooper and Nicolette Avenue, Danyon Boulevard between MLK Jr. Boulevard and 43rd Street, and Lamert Boulevard between MLK Jr. Boulevard and 43rd Street, a historic cultural monument.
So some of the trees that you were concerned about, based on this amended motion, will be saved, okay? So with that said, no speakers in the queue. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay.
And again, that adopts amending motion 12A.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell, I did not see you. I'm sorry.
Thank you. This is a different item, Mr. President. I just want to take a moment and acknowledge some very distinguished young men and women from our sister city of Beirut, Lebanon, today. And what I'd like to do is welcome Joanna Netchef and the Antonine University Choir, acknowledge their presence. We're visiting us this morning from Beirut. The Antonine University Choir belongs to the Higher Institute of Music at Antonine University. They are considered one of the premier choral groups from Lebanon. They are currently on a concert tour of Los Angeles and will be indulging us with a light performance on the fourth floor above the rotunda. The acoustics should be really wonderful up there. Please join me in welcoming them. But I also want to acknowledge Father Tufik Matuk, director of the chorus. I would also like to acknowledge, I'm gonna name them all, members of the Sister City Beirut, Lebanon Committee, of which I had the incredible privilege of traveling to in 2006 along with my predecessor and Mr. Dennis Zein and Brian Perry, who is here, another champion for Lebanon. Wafa Habala, chair. Wafa. Joanna Medawar Netchef. Tony Marillo. Amirah Matar. Janet Elliott. Tommy Tedros. And Talal Badun. Colleagues, everyone in the chamber, please give them a warm round of applause, and thank you for visiting and gracing us with your presence.
Mr. Laban.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for your leadership on us and the help. The Beirut Sister City is one of our newest sister cities in the term of all things, and they're one of the most active. And I certainly, on behalf of all of our sister cities, want to welcome you and look forward to the serenade later on. Welcome, welcome, welcome.
Okay, now, thank you. We want to go to items 13. Items 13, called special by Dr. Williams and Mr. Walsh. Okay, Dr. Williams, go right ahead.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, LA 32 Neighborhood Council and user of Hazard Park. We're always concerned about the efforts of the USC and the city regarding Hazard Park. We've, I'd say, cooperated in many occasions, tried to get the road relocated, maybe got it there. We have wetlands, we have a lot of things in that park. Have this motion amended to include a community panel coordination with the foundation in order to make sure that you're not just displacing the responsibility for problems arising. So please include Ramona, Lincoln Heights, El Sereno, Moyle Heights, and a panel to help keep this park for Ramona Gardens rather than USC. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Walsh. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You didn't vote to restrict us at the special meeting to one minute on each agenda item. That has not been... Let's speak to the item. Well, as far as Hollywood tweeting it, at Hollywood Highlands...
He still has not talked about...
The LA parks, he knows... Speak to the item, though, Mr. Walsh. You don't need advice from the city attorney. Hazard Park, 100% in favor of Hazard Park. Stay tuned for item 15. Okay, thank you. Last speaker on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Let's go to item 10 at this time. No speakers on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. We'll go, Mr. Walsh, item 14. No more cards on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's hold that, Mr. Parks.
Approving, because it looks like there's two inconsistent reports on the file. There's a CLA report, and then there's a committee report.
The Budget and Finance Committee report is before council, sir.
Okay, because the reason I bring the question, it seems like the CLA report reflects that you cannot make the moratorium. We have no authority to do it. So I'm just, if we're approving the Budget and Finance report, it appears we don't have the authority to do what they recommended.
Mr. Biden.
Yes, we have been advised further that we can, and we have done this a few times in the past, over the past few years as well.
Let's open the roll, close the roll. I don't have a card for you, Mr. Sachs. On which item was it? I didn't hear it. Oh, public hearing was satisfied on that item. So let's go on, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Kocorian, on item 16, where would you like to go with that?
We will need to hear that in closed session.
No, no disruptions, Mr. Walsh. You can't holler during the meeting. Mr. Kocorian?
For the public's information, public comment was satisfied during the Budget and Finance Committee's consideration of that matter.
Thank you. Okay, no, no sergeants, no disruptions of the meeting. Now, I think I, we're getting ready to go into closed session. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Clerk, but I know we have some cards.
Yes, sir.
On item 15. I don't... Item 15, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Sacks. Before we go into closed session.
That's what I said, asked for.
Just speak on this item.
Ladies and gentlemen, the world, Mr. Jose Wezar has been accused of sticking his index finger up his aide's Francine Godoy's vagina and making her smell it. He is now being on trial. He will be on trial in November. The city of Los Angeles is now his criminal attorney. What we have here is a $200,000 retainer to a law firm called Walsh Associates, no relation, and they're going to go back there and pass it. Mr. Wezar is going to sit back there. And I'm telling you right now that you have, when you go back there and spend, in the end, approximately, it's going to cost you $1 million for Mr. Wezar sticking his finger up Ms. Godoy's vagina and making her smell it. And that was what it was all about.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Sacks, please come forward.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Sacks.
Good morning, Arnold Sacks. You know, back in the day, when people were so interested in other people's sex lives, you used to call them perverts. I think you could still apply that moniker to some people that come up here and speak about other people's sex lives. Anyway, the $200,000 that you're proposing to spend for this attorney just doesn't make sense. You have a report in front of you that dictates the accusations and what went on. Why is an outside attorney even necessary in this case? Either the facts speak for themselves and you're going to vote on it, or you're going to spend $200,000 just as an introduction for some hourly rates and then approve a settlement. So you're going to add injury to insult.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and Mr. Walsh, don't go anywhere. We're going to also hear your card on item 16, so go right ahead.
Well, item 16 refers to a settlement. And the backup, part of the settlement reads here, "The backup occurred because of root intrusion in the city's sewer main line." So that brings to mind the half-cent sales tax that's being proposed. And I think I brought this up once before about the street repair and the sidewalk repair, that you have a problem with your sewer infrastructure. Now, you had an item on your agenda that I know. Are you going to deal with the moratorium with these newly repaid streets when they have to dig them up to repair the sewer line for sewer intrusion by root? Or will that be taken as a case-by-case situation? And that hasn't really been discussed. All that's been discussed is we need a half-cent sales tax. We don't even want to go into the different amounts to repair the streets. So what about DWP and their stance on it?
Thank you. Okay, sergeants, could you clear the counsel? Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. President, just for clarification, today's closed session discussion on item number 15 is regarding the authorization under the Brand Act as pursuant to government code section 5495-6.9D1 to discuss the case entitled Francine Godoy versus City of Los Angeles. The independent investigator's report...
Mr. Sacks, please. Okay, go on, Mr. City Attorney.
The independent investigator's report will not be discussed in closed session.
Can we clear the council chambers?
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play...
...and a safe haven like Hollenback Pal.
With One Cup, I can play soccer after school.
With One Cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and then struck by a motor vehicle.
5859, KF5060, watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10:00 PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violent traffic accidents and we have to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as a grill meet.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to you by the parents, it's a guardian someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five nine, Kia five oh six zero, watch three.
Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and when we, uh, up to no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as a parole beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
So are we back in open session? Okay, uh, Mr. City Attorney, it's my understanding that you have an announcement to make, or should we just proceed on item fifteen first?
Mr. President, on item fifteen, council can vote on that matter as agendized.
Okay, on item fifteen, let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Uh, now on item sixteen, don't you have to make a statement?
Yes, sir.
Or city attorney?
In the case entitled Sinisha Nisovich versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $6,187,678.68 in settlement.
Thank you. Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you.
And, Mr. President, before recessing, uh, or excuse me, before adjourning the special meeting, I'd just like to be clear that all items in the regular as well as this special meeting are going forthwith today.
Okay, now have we finished everything that's in the special meeting?
Yes, sir.
So we can adjourn this meeting and go back to the regular meeting?
Yes, sir.
Well, let's do that. And what would be before us?
Mr. President, uh, that brings counsel to general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, we'll try to run through that as quick as possible because of the quorum issues. One minute, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Dr. Williams, and Sean Murphy, Anthony Wayne Ford. So as I call your name, just please come to the microphone. We'll start off with Mr. Walsh, followed by Dr. Williams, followed by Sean.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. What just happened is that by a vote of ten to nothing, the city council has voted $200,000 to become the criminal attorney of Mr. Bus, of, uh, Weezer. I want you to know who that was. Bonin, shame on you. Parks, shame on you. Fuentes, shame on you. Krikorian, shame on you. O'Farrell, shame on you. Shame on all ten of you. This means that you could, I just want people in the staff domain, that if, if they go back to the office and rape you, any of these rape you, they know that when the city council will be their criminal attorney. $200,000, up to a million dollars. What garbage. Stay out of this city. What garbage. Where is, where is he? Where is the rapist?
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Williams, please, uh, don't disrupt the meeting, uh, followed by Mr. Murphy. Go right ahead.
Dr. Tom Williams, Sierra Club Angeles Chapter Fracking Oil and Gas Committee Co-Chair. When are we going to get a moratorium ordinance? Question. When? Mr. City Attorney, when are we going to get it? We're waiting. Oh, by the way, last night, twenty-some-odd people were very interested in fracking, water flooding, and earthquakes in the La Habra-Brea area. Lots of good information, over two hundred earthquakes in the vicinity of intense water flooding and fracking within the cities of Brea and La Habra. There's some evidence. Question is, when are we going to have a chance at the L.A. Municipal Code 13.01, the oil and gas? It hasn't been revised for over ten years, and there's a lot of things that need to be changed in it to bring it up to speed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sean, come on up, followed by, I think I said Anthony Wayne Ford, followed by Arnold Sacks.
Yeah, Herb. Good morning, good afternoon now. It's, I want to wish all my fans a happy Good Friday and Easter. The dedication went well last night. A lot of people came, a lot of dignitaries. We have a new saint. The church is completely refurbished. Uh, we're gonna be busy next week throughout the holy week. I don't know why you're going on recess again. You just had one.
Thank you, Sean. Talk to Mr. Labange. Okay, Mr. Ford, Anthony Wayne Ford, uh, I don't see Mr. Sacks. Sid, come forward. Rusty Malar, come forward. Bobby Cooper, come forward. Okay, I called your names. Uh, Brian Barajas, please come forward, followed by, uh, Mr. Hubman.
Okay. Now, uh, if anybody goes to LaRouchePack.com, I think they head wave that Keisha Rogers, Senator, in the runoff in Texas is having. A LaRouche Democrat pretty much speaks volume. On the other end will be Michael Steger running against Nancy Pelosi. These candidates are going against the, not the British people, it's the British Empire. They're the cause of the fracking, they're the cause of the financial collapse, they are the cause of World War III. This president, we don't have one. We haven't had real representation in a long time. And so it goes back to the foundation of our country, but also of civilization. No mathematics will ever tell you that. And that's the truth. So anybody who believes in math, they're insane. It's about the human species, it's about the future.
Thank you. Yes?
Mr. President, um, um, last time I was here, we were talking about why would we lobby on behalf of the right to share food? Conflict occurs when governments, most often municipalities, attempt to affect social engineering by restricting or forbidding the sharing of food in public property, the commons, and even on private property. I liken this kind of social engineering to wildlife management. Problem is, we're talking about our human brothers and sisters and not pesky pigeons or other wild animals. Also, my friend Brian from Linder LaRouche was up here a week ago and said that the, um, ouster of Shana Kovich was, um, a right-wing, um, um, fascist conspiracy. I say Shana Kovich was a kleptomaniac, uh, a kleptomaniac extraordinaire, only outdone by Putin, who has been in social service all of his adult life and...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, no, 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 come on, your time is up. Your time is up, you're disturbing the meeting. Okay, uh, Mr., that concludes general public comment. Mr. Clerk, where are we?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements. Let Mr. Labange.
For Mr. Bloomfield asked us to, uh, tell everybody that the president of the Theater of the Will will perform in his district on the 22nd on Earth Day, so check his website, it's very special. Theater of the Will, we thank Willard Sims.
Any more? I don't see any more adjournings. If everybody could rise for adjourning motions. If everyone could please rise. Are there any adjourning motions? Oh, Mr. Krikorian. I didn't know if you were fixing here. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, members, the flags of our city are flying at half-mast because, uh, our city lost a hero and the San Fernando Valley lost a guardian and a friend when, on Wednesday, valley traffic...
Hold, Mr. Krikorian, shh. This, I had forgotten about this. This is very important. So let's please have silence as Mr. Krikorian explains this adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Wednesday, Valley Traffic Motor Officer Chris Cortijo passed away from the horrific injuries that he suffered during an accident, uh, this past weekend in, um, Sun Valley. He was a constituent of mine, uh, and he was a hero and a guardian, uh, for all of us. He was a well-respected and beloved officer. Officer Cortijo carried on a life of service as a twenty-six-year veteran with the Los Angeles Police Department, and even before he was an officer, uh, he served our country for four years with the United States Marine Corps. He began his career in the department in nineteen eighty-seven in the West Traffic Division and dedicated really his entire career to keeping our streets, literally, keeping our streets safe, uh, in a career in traffic enforcement. In nineteen ninety-two, Officer Cortijo was promoted to motor officer and assigned to the Valley Traffic Division in nineteen ninety-five, where he worked the DUI task force team for seventeen years, dedicating his life to protecting all of us against the hazards of driving under the influence. Officer Cortijo was responsible for the arrest and apprehension of over three thousand DUI drivers. It's an amazing record of service in keeping us all safe. And there's, of course, a very cruel irony in the fact that right up to the last moment of his service, as he was still protecting us, he was ultimately killed by someone who has been arrested for driving under the influence. He was recognized twice as Motor Officer of the Year, in two thousand and two, and most recently, just last week, in a ceremony that was held, uh, last Thursday, he was recognized again as Motor Officer of the Year, and many of the members, uh, joined in recognizing him, recognizing him for that. Um, he was recognized with over a hundred and twenty commendations throughout his career for his many significant contributions and for the professionalism, integrity, responsibility, and sense of personal pride that he reflected and that's so often reflected by the men and women of our department. "It's with great sorrow that we say goodbye to one of our heroes, described by his friends and family as a good man with a big heart who selflessly dedicated his life to protecting others and saving lives." This is, this case is a reminder, I think, that every day, every man and woman who puts on the uniform puts their lives at risk. And, uh, it's something that we should be mindful of as we serve the city every day. Our thoughts and condolences are with his family, his friends, his brothers and sisters in the department, who carry on the work of keeping the people of our city safe every day. Officer Cortijo is survived by his beloved partner Lily Price, his son Jonathan Cortijo, his daughter Christina Beal, brother Jonathan Wommack, and of course, uh, every citizen of the city of Los Angeles who is made safer by his service and who will miss him, uh, in his loss. On Monday, April twenty-first, from three to nine PM, there will be a public viewing for Officer Cortijo at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills in the Hall of Liberty. And his funeral will be Tuesday, April twenty-second, at nine AM at the Cathedral of Our Lady of the Angels with interment, uh, interment to follow immediately after at Forest Lawn Hollywood Hills. Obviously, all of us are, uh, grieving with his family and friends the loss of, of our brother, Officer Chris Cortijo, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Krikorian. Are there, Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was gonna hold this one off, uh, until I had more details on the memorial service, but I think it'll probably happen while we're on recess. Uh, earlier this week, uh, members of the community of Venice, uh, learned that Brett Haller, who was the creator and the moderator and the content provider and editor of a popular community blog, Yo Venice, passed away. He was considerably younger than me, I don't know his exact age, uh, late-stage cancer, the bastard cancer took someone else yet again. Uh, it was a shock to, to most of his friends and his readers. Uh, they were greeted with an announcement on the blog, "Here's to Brett," written by his, uh, members of his family just a few days ago. He was sort of a new face of, of community journalism at a time when newspapers are, are folding and disappearing and covering less news. Brett created a forum and a place for people visiting and living in Venice to find out more about the community, about new restaurants, about, uh, uh, new art galleries, about new shows and new events. And then he added, uh, a very lively, not always friendly to me or my predecessor, forum for community voices, particularly for new folks who've come to the community to voice their concerns and to have the, uh, kind of spirited dialogue for which Venice has become famous. And, um, it's a horrible loss. The family and some of his friends have insisted that the blog will continue and the news source will continue. Uh, no details on memorial service yet, but, uh, uh, large numbers of people in Venice are in mourning this week that someone who dedicated a large chunk of his life to the betterment of the neighborhood and the community has passed. Uh, may he rest in peace and walk forever in the sunlight of the spirit.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Any more? Mr. Labange?
Thank you for opening the meeting, a reflection of the tragedy in Northern California Humboldt State, visiting graduates from Los Angeles and area schools. I know all the names when we adjourn.
No, thank you. Okay, uh, this meeting is adjourned.